Okay, we are live again.
Okay, I'd like to order the May 23rd, May 24th, 2021 Board of Supervisors meeting. Please rise for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just and all.
Roll call, Mr. Pyho. Mr. Pyho. Roll call. Jack?
Oh, here.
Mr. Spees?
Here.
Ms. Kircher?
Yeah.
Mr. Saab?
Here.
And I am here. Just want to announce that we have Chris Hartman acting as our solicitor tonight. So for Lisa McGovern. Next, we have public comments.
There was one submitted for the agenda. It's from David Hughes.
This is David Hughes. I live on 47th Street. I'm leaving this message concerning the agenda item under new business number two. Resolution permitting township manager to execute Perkyomen Avenue street skate easement agreements. I can see that you're going to contact the owners of multiple properties about the information. And I believe that this information should be made available to the public. I'd like to know exactly what's going on as well, not just the owners of properties. I have a lot of questions like, is this going to cost the owners any amount of money? Is it going to cost the taxpayers what amount of money? I know we have a grant, but we also have to match some of those grant numbers. And what does this actually entail at this point? So there's a lot of things that are not revealed in this very simple stated new business item. The staff is going to be approaching the property owners to explain the project. Well, how about explaining the project to the whole community? So all of a sudden, all this, these questions and people start wondering, what's going on up there? What are they doing now? If you communicate to the whole community, this process and this particular part of the Perkyomen Avenue project, so that we all are aware of it. I think it would be a better situation for all of us. So I'd like to see more information. Maybe you'll talk about it in a meeting, but you're not giving it clear, clear guidance on, on the agenda. And there should be some document that we can read in the future so that other people ask questions. We can point them to that document that explains everything that's going on. I'm not sure sending out township staff to approach each property owner is the most efficient way to, to do this. But hey, I'm not going to question your procedures any longer unless it is clearly something that's very obtuse. So that's great. Send out staff members to approach every property owner and talk to them individually. But I think a lot of that could be accomplished by sending a very, a very concise letter to each owner explaining everything. So anyway, those are my opinions on this matter for the one agenda item that I have a comment on. Thank you very much.
You mean comment correct, Laurie?
That was it for, for agenda items.
Okay, announcements. Do you want to talk about the library story walk?
Yep, sure can. And I'm just going to share. I have a couple of photos that I can share. We just wanted to announce that the grand opening of the Exeter Community Library's Story Walk will be on Friday, May 28th at 10:00 a.m. It goes from 10 to 2 and they'll be doing some, hosting some fun activities. Very excited. Our, our Public Works team, Clarence and his, and his team have been working really hard on this and it looks awesome. I don't know if anyone has had a chance to drive by lately, but it really, it really looks great. It's going to be a huge benefit to the township and it's just so great for the library. So we've just got a couple of pictures here to share of, of us working on it and some of the final products and improvements over there. But the library is very excited about this, as they should be, and we are too. So anyone who has time then go out and check it out on, on Friday between 10 and 2 should, should go and do it. And then the trail after that point will be open daily from, from dawn to dusk, just like all of our parks are.
Yeah, and you meant Saturday between 10 and 2, correct?
Yes, Saturday. Sorry. Yes, Saturday. Saturday, May 29th.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Laurie?
No.
All right, we'll move on to regular approvals. The first is the minutes. As I understand it, we need to reapprove the April 26 minutes. Is that correct, Jeff?
Yes, during that meeting, Mr. Pyho, that was his first meeting that he was officially attending. However, he was not a board member at the previous meeting. And when the vote was called, Mr. Pyho voted along with the rest of the board members to affirm the minutes, which he could not do. So we really need to just have another approval, at which time Mr. Pyho can abstain because he was not a board member at the time. And then we'll be able to move on.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the April 26, 2021, regular meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
Any comments, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And I abstain.
So it's a 401 vote. Next, we have the regular minutes for May 10th, 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular minutes, May 10th, 2021.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? 50 vote. Next, we have dispersments. I think there were some questions for Jen submitted. Is she on?
I am Greg. There were a few questions submitted that I will answer. The first was for an invoice for Daravan Electric in the amount of $2,890. This was for exterior, an exterior weatherproof electrical panel replacement at the Redding Country Club. And it's located outside of the second floor kitchen. There was a payment to the Exeter Township Volunteer Fire Department in the amount of $82,500. This is their quarterly payment of their fire services tax to the fire department. There's a invoice payable to Mailie in the amount of $15,900. This is a progress billing for audit work, preparation of the DCED CLGS 30 and the 2020 full financial statement report that they prepare. Lastly, there was an invoice for RAM siding in the amount of $4,259.60. This was a repair to the ambulance building roof due to some wind damage. We do have an insurance claim submitted and we will be receiving $2,164.43 towards this expense.
Thank you, Jen.
Any other questions? Someone want to make a motion to approve the dispersments?
I move that we approve the dispersments in May 20.
Not me.
Not me.
Not me.
I'll, I'll second it.
All right, so we have a, a motion and a second. Any other comments, questions?
Yeah.
In favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? 50 vote. Next, we have the treasurer's report. Were there questions for that?
I had none.
Yeah, I ain't, I ain't think so. Anyone have any comments or questions with regards to that? Does someone want to make a motion to approve it?
I move that we approve the treasurer's report from April 2021, subject to audit. I'll second that.
Comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? 50 vote. Next, unfinished business. We will be discussing township building operations and resuming in-person public meetings for township boards and commissions. Jeff or Laurie, one of you want to address this?
Sure, I think Laurie is going to jump in and, and she provided some information to the board.
Sure, yeah. Jeff, did you, you want me to start off?
Sure.
Okay, so we wanted to just have an updated conversation with the new COVID, the, the lifting of the COVID mitigation orders announced by the governor. I think it was last week. As of Memorial Day, all mitigation orders are going to be lifted except for the mask mandate. Pennsylvanians who are not vaccinated are still required to wear their masks until Pennsylvania reaches a 70% vaccination record level. So we wanted to revisit the discussion on in-person public meetings and just update the board on what we intend to do with the township building as far as its operations. So at, at this point, for a return to in-person public meetings, the administration is recommending that should the board feel it, it is time, we could resume holding public meetings in the township building and take advantage of the technology that we have there to continue to livestream the meetings for those who are unable or still feel uncomfortable coming to an in-person gathering. We would require masks upon entrance for the public. We'd be following all CDC guidelines that are still in effect at that, at that time. And we will, of course, continue to keep an eye on it and we'll do whatever we can to make everybody feel, feel safe. So that would be our recommendation for a return to in-person. And that could be effective as early as the first meeting in June. We feel comfortable in working with our IT provider that we can get the technology up and running sufficiently by that date. As far as building, township building operations, same thing, we, we could reopen our, the doors to the building at that time. And anybody who, any members of the public who come in would be required to wear masks in accordance with the, the ongoing governor's orders. And we would follow all CDC guidelines as far as cleaning protocols and social distancing and everything that still remains in effect. So we just wanted to open up the discussion for a return to in-person meeting to the board and see what everybody's comfort levels are. We are keeping an eye on the numbers, of course, in Berks County especially because we, it, it's not really good enough for us to just look at Pennsylvania numbers. We need to know what's going on in our community. And Berks County does still have what is classified as a high-level community transmission. So that's why we are still really being cautious and keeping an eye on that. We've also only got a vaccination level of in the 30% in our community. So just points for discussion for the board. So I think Jeff, if you have anything to add, or if we want to just hear if you have any questions on that plan.
We, um, when, when we went through all the information provided by the state, we, we obviously let a lot of it weigh heavily on, on what's going on in Berks County. Berks County is not as progressive as some other portions of the, of the Commonwealth in terms of numbers of vaccinations and overall rates. So that's why we, we, we still feel we, we do need to do the, the masking and practice as much social distance as possible. The question was posed to the, to the staff to also look at other options, primarily the Redding Country Club. During the past year, during the pandemic, the, the township has been livestreaming the meetings over YouTube. And I think a lot of residents out there got accustomed to having that availability to be able to watch the meeting as, as it occurring without actually coming to the meeting. Our current equipment that we have in our, in our boardroom right now was purchased about three, a little over three years ago to be able to videotape the meetings and have that, that available. With some minor modification by our IT staff, we will be able to livestream using our existing equipment. If we were to go to another location such as the ballroom in the Redding Country Club, essentially, we would have to start over again in the way of all the equipment when it comes to the, being able to video the meetings and livestreaming. That give or take is somewhere in the neighborhood of $28,000. And it's really, I, I think that would be just a, not a good use of, of our resources on the short term to, to be able to put that equipment in that room. We normally would not be, not be using that equipment in, in a regular meeting situation. The, the, we, we did look at our current boardroom. We looked at the spacing of the, the chairs in there. And we, we think that given past experience for normal board meetings, the attendance that of, of folks coming to regular board meetings, not one that has a, a very large issue looming, but just a regular standard board meeting, we feel that it would be suitable to have the meetings in the, in the current boardroom right now. If we know that we have the potential for a very large attendance, then we will make other arrangements possibly at the school district. I believe in the past, some meetings were held at the library. So we will, we'll look at those options if we know we're going to have a very large meeting. So it's really, it's up to the decision of the board. The staff feels comfortable that we will be able to take care of the, the residents and the board and the staff. We will make sure that the room is sanitized properly before and after the meetings, since the public will be in that area of the building that normally is, is not open to the public. Regarding the, the, the front entrance of the building, currently it's, the door is locked. We are open. If people need to, to come to the building, we have a drop box and they can also just call into us. We'll meet them at the door. The appropriate staff member can meet them, take paperwork from them, what have you. The police operate the same way. What we will be proposing to do would be, we would unlock the front doors. Folks can come in and go to the police counter that, as they had done in the past, the staff there is fully vaccinated. They do have protection in front of them. The same goes for the, the administration side of the building. It is a glassed-in window. The staff there are vaccinated and anytime they're dealing with the public, that our staff will be wearing masks until the full mask restrictions are lifted. We do request that when people do come into the building for public business, that they, until the restrictions are lifted, that they wear their masks and just proper distancing. There's plenty of room that they can space out. They don't need to stand right on top of each other. So that's what we're recommending. If the board has any questions, or if you'd like to, just by a simple motion to, to move in that direction, we'll make the necessary arrangements to, to have the meeting ready for the, the next meeting.
I have a question, Jeff.
Yes, Michelle.
How many seats then are you going to have in this boardroom?
In, in our boardroom right now, we, we looked at the, the distancing of the chairs. There, there are taped off areas that the chairs can't be moved out of in order to provide aisles for a normal egress. We would be staying within those guidelines. And I think right now there are six chairs in a row and we were looking at putting four chairs in a row. So I think Laurie, correct me on the, on the math, I think we have 12 seats up at the podium area. And I believe we were going to have 20?
Yep, that's correct.
20 seats in the audience area. So depending on, on, obviously, how many staff members are attending in person at the meeting. You know, we're going to be down just slightly from the original maximum capacity in that room. According to the Fire March, I believe it was 45 people.
That's correct. But we're also adding, sorry, I'm sorry, Michelle.
I just said thank you, too. Go ahead.
That's why we are adding the livestream component as well. Because I have gotten feedback from residents who've really enjoyed being able to just watch the meetings from home. And they've indicated that it wasn't always convenient for them to come to the meetings in person. So even when we do go back to in-person, they've said that they might prefer to just watch from home rather than coming into the building. So that's why we're hoping, well, that's why we came up with the idea to give that as an option that we hadn't done before.
I, I have a couple of questions. One, have you thought about public comment and that, how that would be handled?
Okay, currently, we do public comment via email or voicemail prior to the meeting. And the cutoff was at noon on the, on the day of the meeting. Since we would be going back to a, a public meeting, we're recommending that public comments be made in person at the meeting. I think be, doing hybrid by having some people calling in and some people in person, I don't believe is the direction we want to go. We're, we're not going to be doing hybrid where multiple board members would be, you know, coming in from video outside and the other board members were here. So I, I feel it would make sense to do public comment the same way. If, if we're going to be public, you'll come to the meeting and make your public comments. You, you're, anyone is always welcome to make a comment to the township, you know, complaints or public comments to the staff. And we can address them at any time, not necessarily at a meeting. If, if, if we feel it's extremely important, we could bring it up as a staff member at the meeting as part of our report. But at any time, anyone is always welcome to, to send comments to the township.
Okay, and the second question, I, I cannot attend the June 14th meeting in person. I, I have surgeries the next day, so I, I won't be attending in person, but I will be attending. Okay. We going to be able to accommodate that for board members? Because in the past, I think we never utilized it, but we could call in.
Yes, that is a provision. If, if you're unable to attend, as long as the people at, in the audience can hear you and you can hear them, we can set up a, a phone there. You can call in. We'll make sure that the, that it's either on a speaker or microphones that both parties, you and the audience, will be able to hear each other. That, that can be accommodated.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff, Jeff or Laurie, just maybe two quick ones. You mentioned public comment will be in person. While we're doing this, we're still under partial restrictions. Will people still have the option that are watching online? Can they in advance send or mail in or voicemail in a public comment that will be read? I know that adds complication. We're not going to have live, but I don't know if we could, you know, I don't know. That was just one question. And I guess my second question is, or maybe the other board members can comment, you know, if 25 people show up or 30 people show up, how, how do we choose the, the 20? First come, first served, or you know, what's that going to be like?
So I, yeah, go ahead, Laurie.
Yeah, I would say if the board would like us to continue offering public comment in the way we do now, we can. When Jeff and I were talking and strategizing on this, it was our thought that it seemed like the feedback I was getting on those who might like to watch the livestream were not necessarily those who really wanted to put in a public comment. So we kind of talked and said if it would be easier and more streamlined and more fair for everybody if those who want to make public comments are at the meeting. And as Jeff said, of course, if something comes up during the meeting that somebody has a question on or, or an opinion. And generally, the board does a very good job of, you discuss the issues and you don't necessarily make a decision that night and it's the first time you've talked about it. So there's time for the public to give you their input. So we can always accept feedback and, and questions and answer anything that the residents come up with after the meeting. And just like Jeff said, if people are sending us, just like we did with recycling, if any, if people are sending us comments and feedback, Jeff and I can certainly share those during the meeting. But if the board would like to continue doing that sort of hybrid option, it's something we can talk about. But I, I think it would probably be the most efficient to just have public comments be in person. And then as far as accommodating people in the meeting room, we do have the capability to allow for additional seats in the hallway within, still within the fire code. We can do that. And there are speakers out there that we can, that everybody is still able to hear. So you, you might not be able, you're not physically in the room, but you're right there and the doors are wide open. So that is something we can do. So we can accommodate more than, more than 20 should that many show up.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just, I'm in, I'm in favor, I'm in favor of going back and open up the township building if we can, you know, do what we need to do from a safety perspective. You know, for the, for the folks in the audience as well as the, as well as the employees. So I'm in favor. Let's go back.
Someone want to make?
Uh, one other question. Jeff, was the, the township building open to the public? Are you, are you looking at June 1st for that? Or are you looking to make that the same date as the meet? Because is June 1st doable? Is that what we're looking at?
We were looking at, most likely, we could open the building for walk-in traffic before we have our regular meeting on June 14th. We just need to make sure our staff is fully prepped to understand. We, we've already discussed it with them, but they need to be aware that we are going to go live on a certain date. So I, I think, you know, after the Memorial Day weekend, we can, we can make accommodations to, to go live at that point.
Okay, so would, would we need the motion to be for, let's see the calendar here.
Well, I, I think, I think the motion is basically that the board needs to cut, to reverse what had been done previously by the board, which authorized that all meetings be advertised, be held in a virtual format. So we need a motion basically stating effective June 14th forward that all Board of Supervisors meetings will be held live at the municipal complex. And we'll take care of the advertising going forward with that.
Do we need to add about the office being open?
Um, well, I don't, I don't know if the, I mean, you could add that in. I, I don't know if that was actually ever voted on by the board to close the office. I think that was more of a reaction to what the governor said. You need to shut things down. I think, you know, if, it could easily be added into, into the motion and we'll make it happen.
Jeff, Jack here. Hey, before we vote and all, I heard Greg has June 14th, you got to call in, correct, Greg?
Yeah, I'm, I'm having surgery June 15th, so I'm not going to attend in person.
Okay, and June 14th, I am scheduled to be, I got four days. I'm going to be in New Mexico. Now, if that's, if it's no issue, I can call in. I can win that Monday evening, but before we go further here, I just want to let everybody know that I would have to call in that night versus then doing it online or a certainty cannot be in person.
If we're going to have an in-person meeting, we need to have a quorum of the board physically present. So if Jack and Greg call in and the other three supervisors are all physically present, that'll be okay.
I will, I will be there on the 14th.
I will.
I will as well.
Okay, good. We're covered.
We struck a quorum.
Good.
Okay, very good.
All right.
Want to make a motion?
Somebody make a motion. If not, I'll, I'll so move that, let's open her up, June 14th.
And I will second that. Do you, do you want to add in, Jack, about, yeah, you don't have to add in about the office.
I think so. So that's a motion to advertise Board of Supervisors meetings being held the second and fourth Monday of the month at the township building at 7:00 p.m.?
Correct.
Okay.
I will second, I will second that motion.
I think Dave had seconded already. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? 50 vote.
And just, hey, Chris, since you're here.
And just, hey, Chris, since you're here, again, too, we did follow the governor's orders and directive to shut everything, got shut down. So I don't believe there was a formal vote. Do we need a would we need a motion to reopen to the public, the township building?
I believe a motion would be helpful to publicize the change in status, but you know, I want to be respectful of Jeff's position as the manager on site. Do you have a specific date that you feel comfortable with, Jeff? Or do you want the board to just say that the the office building will be opening soon and you will maybe post something on the face or on the on the internet about the opening? What what do you feel is appropriate from a management standpoint?
From a management standpoint, I would, I would like to actually open on a Monday. And with the holiday weekend in there, actually, I would I would wish that we could open officially to the public on Monday, June seventh. That'll give us a week of time before before we're open for a public meeting. And, you know, we have the holiday weekend, there's a lot of people are not around and I think giving, give that final week. That will help actually every week that we that we add, I think will help in terms of more people being vaccinated. And, you know, the the staff being more comfortable with the public coming in. So if the board would be inclined to to go for June seventh, I'd appreciate that.
I move that we reopen the township facilities and office to public on Monday, June seventh, two thousand twenty one.
I'm answer questions.
Joe, could you just clarify that that applies just to the township building?
Township bill, I'm sorry, yeah, the township township building.
Thank you.
And I'll second that re- remotion.
Tom answer questions. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, five oh vote. Onto new business. Consider approval of improvements, financial security and maintenance agreement for M D C twenty-three dash two dash oh three land development. Is this Joe?
Greg, this is Will, I could talk on this. So several meetings ago, the or the board of supervisors approved the final land development plan conditional upon several agreements being signed. The township solicitor has drafted this agreement. We have received the financial security and the developer has agreed to the terms of the agreement. So we are just asking that the board of supervisors approve this agreement. That's before you.
Do we have a motion to approve the agreement?
Make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, five oh vote. Next, consider resolution permitting township manager to execute Perkyomen Avenue Streetscape easement agreements. Jeff.
This is Will again. So in order to expedite easement agreements for temporary temporary construction as well as permanent easements for a few properties for the installation of sidewalk. The township staff would like a resolution allowing the township manager to enter these agreements. I believe there are thirty-five properties, thirty-four properties that will require some sort of easement. In in order to expedite the agreements, we we suggest that the board of supervisors adopt this resolution. Township staff have sent letters probably over the last year to property owners that are affected. We can put some type of plan or something on the website or onto social media in in order for other residents to understand the project. And as we're aware, the the first phase of the project has already begun, which was the installation of conduit and street lights, street lighting bases up and down Perkyomen.
But if I could add something also, the this project is not new. It is grant funded. The match that the township is putting into this basically is covering the engineering costs and those costs were budgeted. The work that's being done varies from property to property. Some are getting sidewalk air, some are getting curves as streetlights on certain properties. There might be a some landscaping or a tree on a different property. The letters were sent out to the to the residents. They're they're aware that this work is going to be done on their property. You can't really send send a standard generic letter because each property is different. Some will require just a construction easement, some will require a permanent right of way, depending on the work being done. Our staff has gone out there. I know Joe's been out there, Will has been out there, talking with individual residents about the work being done to to bring them up to speed, make sure all their questions are answered. So we we're putting a lot of time into this to get this done. If any residents want to see this project, we can produce the the drawings again, have them available so people can see what is actually being done. The question was asked during public comment, there is no cost on going to the homeowners. This is all being taken care of by the grant. We're doing all the the legal work and the paperwork and everything. So it's it's not there's nothing coming out of out of a resident's pocket on this project. And it really will expedite it. For example, if we had one of these agreements completed this week, we're going to have to wait another two and a half weeks before we have a board meeting to have the board sign off on on this agreement. And then let's say the day after the next meeting, we have two more of these and they have to wait another two weeks. So you know, as we're, as they're getting ready to really push this construction ahead, it makes sense to to have me as the manager review these with our legal folks and sign off on them. If if the board wants, I can give a a summary report at each meeting, just to say the following properties were entered into agreements over the last two weeks. That way everyone knows how many properties are taking place and we can keep this project moving forward.
All right, personally, I'm very comfortable with this. Does anyone else have any comments?
I actually, I mean, with all the communication that's been in place thus far, I think the the one-on-one with the with the property owner is actually a nice touch. So you know, we talk about communication and transparency. I think this is part of it. So I'm in favor, I'm in favor of it and this is standard for this this type of project. So I I don't, I don't see an issue with it myself.
I will make a motion to approve the resolution permitting the township manager to execute the Perkyomen Avenue Streetscape easement agreements.
I'll second that.
Comments or questions?
Yeah, I I have one, Greg. Jeff, this is probably or maybe will directed to either one of you. Is if I understand this correctly, temporary construction, temporary construction is beyond the legal easement that the township has along the right of way. Am I correct in understanding what temporary construction means in this case?
Jack, you'd be correct. It's essentially if they need to get a piece of equipment to redo a driveway apron or to install new sidewalk. That will be likely be outside of the road right away. So we would need that temporary construction easement in order to go on certain properties.
Okay, and the developer or the contractor in this case then would also be responsible for bringing it back to as a a as-built condition?
That's correct. They will reseed and topsoil and reseed any disturbed areas.
Okay, tho- those were my, that was my question. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, five oh vote. Next, we have discussion on twenty twenty-one summer playground and recreation programs. Lori?
Okay, me again. And once again, just back with an update because the world has changed once again with COVID restrictions. Maybe this will be the last time that I make changes, but we've been moving through the process of planning with the school district for the Talents and Tips program and bringing the the parks and rec aspect to that. So that's going really well. And what we learned through that process, and if the board recalls in the discussion that we had initially when you gave me the authorization to go ahead and work on that program, I had indicated that I would keep an eye on the restrictions and see what we could do to potentially pull off a public option for summer playground this year, which is something that is obviously in very high demand and and the residents want it. So we've been kind of racking our brains and watching the restrictions. And when the announcement came out from the governor's office that as of Memorial Day, like we talked about, most restrictions minus the mask mandate were going to be lifted. It made it a little bit easier for us to consider how we could pull off a regular program. So what I am proposing, what we think we can do is we learned a lot more about what the Talents and Tips program is going to look like. And the good thing that has come out of that is we feel pretty confident. We feel very confident that we can accommodate that program and a smaller version of our regular summer program so that we can offer some spots to kids who are not participating in the Talents and Tips program. We think that based on the numbers that we're talking and the level of commitment that we're giving to the school district, we can still offer a program for a hundred and twenty-five kids at Farming Ridge Park because that park is not being used at the Talents and Tips program. And we'd like to exclude Pine Land Park this year because of the work that we're planning to do out there related to the grant money that we that we received. We'd like to start doing some prep work there. And the main difference, so the main difference is number one, the number of kids. We, based on staffing, this is really all that we can accommodate. Although I still think it's, I'm pretty excited about even being able to accommodate a hundred and twenty-five kids to be able to sign up. So what we'd like to do is to give us a little bit of time because we are obviously kind of behind behind the curve here on our planning. We'd like to reduce the program from eight weeks to seven weeks. So it gives us one extra week of prep time in the beginning to be able to, we have to hire a lot of new staff. We lost a lot by not doing a program last year. So that would give us a little bit of extra wiggle room there to get all of our staff cleared and trained and get all of our supplies in order and all of our field trips planned and be ready to go by the start of the program. So we're looking at a seven-week program, Farming Ridge Park, a hundred and twenty-five kids. I'd like to restrict that to township residents only if for some reason those spots don't all fill up, then we could consider opening to those who are outside of the township. But for now, I'd like to keep the registration limited to just Exeter Township kids. And that that's, that's pretty much what we're looking at. So I would love to hear the board's feedback on that. And if that's something that we can go ahead with. If you agree, we'll of course still meet all of the guidance that is still in effect. So we'll be taking all of the precautions. The kids will be required to wear masks, all of that. But we think that, we think that we can do it and still manage to give those kids who are not able to participate in Talents and Tips an option to come to.
Any questions for Lori?
Yeah, I with the Michelle one. Okay, yeah, sorry. Lori, and I admit, I have not been by the parks or the recreation locations lately. Is everything going to be ready to go for all this?
Yep, yep, we'll be all set. The parks have been open pretty much the entire time. There was a small period of time where we had everything closed, but the parks have been open all season.
Okay, good.
Other questions?
Yes, I have one. How many, are you having the kids program at Pine Land Park also?
No, we're we're proposing just Farming Ridge this year.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to open the parks effective, but date you want to put it?
Um, so we
It would be the recreation program, I think, rather than the parks.
The recreation program.
Yep, the summer playground program and the program, we are proposing that the program would start. It will be in June. I don't have, we're trying to work through the the dates. So but for, I think you could make the motion, the seven-week program, through seven-week summer playground program. And we'll announce the dates and the registration dates, but we want to get our staff lined up first.
Okay, then I amend my motion to say to open the Farming Ridge Park to children.
Well, I think we need to include the recreation program.
To recreation for a hundred and twenty-five kids.
For seven weeks.
Seven weeks.
And I'll second that motion. Any other comments or questions?
Just think it's great that you're able to put it together. Thank you very much. I know, I know the kids will be happy and the parents will be happier.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, five oh vote. Next, authorize the administration to seek bids for dumpster service on municipal municipally owned properties. Who's that?
I I can address that one. The current collection that we have, this is for the dumpsters at our facilities, at the parks and the various buildings. We are not very happy with the service we've been receiving, the way our contract was set up. It was done on a five-year automatic renewal with a buyout provision. We have been in discussions with a number of other vendors, asking, getting some some phone quotes from them and the numbers were significantly lower than what we were paying right now. So we felt that it would be a good fiscal move to put this out to bid and see what kind of numbers we get. We anticipate that we will be, we will, we will experience a significant savings, even with the the buyout provision of the current contract. If I'm not mistaken, Jen, if you could jump in on this, the the numbers we're looking at saving over the next three years would be, I think, eight to nine thousand dollars. And we would also have a little more manageable contract without five-year contract with automatic renewals. We're looking at something a little more manageable at three years. Things may change a lot over the next couple of years in terms of our building and and trash needs in general. So what we're, what we're asking is just authorize us to go out to bid on this. It's, it's not a very complicated bid. It's just a handful of dumpsters. Weekly pickup, there's not a lot to it. So Jen, do you have any other, anything else you wanted to add on the finance side of it?
Oh, not really. Like you had said, we had received some phone quotes and even we have to pay a six-month buyout for the current contract. And the the provider that we signed up with in twenty thirteen has been bought out by another company. We were experiencing customer service issues prior to the buyout and it appears that the issues are continuing. Billing issues, customer service issues, so just not real thrilled. And when we reached out to some of the local companies, it seems like we can save some significant dollars even by paying the six-month buyout clause. So yeah, Jeff, I think it was in excess of ten thousand dollars over the next like two and a half years, we were anticipating we could save even by paying the the cancellation fee.
Okay. Does someone want to make a motion to authorize the administration to seek dumpster services?
I move that we authorize administration to seek bids for dumpster dumpster services on municipally owned property. I move that we authorize administration to seek bids for dumpster, dumpster services on municipally owned properties.
I'll second it.
Any comments or questions?
Um, yeah, one from my end, uh, Jeff probably directed to you is, are you going to look at locally owned um, services?
Well, typically, um, when we go out to bid, um, in order to be fair, it's a, it is a public bid. Um, ideally, anyone that's a local business, uh, makes sense for them to bid on these. They have less travel costs. Um, depending on, on where they're taking the, the, the trash to a local facility or the, if they own a facility in the area. Um, not all haulers do necessarily do a lot of dumpster work. A lot of them do more residential, um, but I think we, we contacted, I think, five or six, all of which have a, a footprint in this area. Um, uh, just to get an idea. And uh, so we feel that we're, we'll, we'll do pretty well on this one.
Thanks.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five oh vote. Next, we have department reports. Clarence, Public Works?
Yes, um, continuing with the highway mowing. Uh, we've got some road repairs still going on for uh, the upcoming uh, oil seal coats that are going to go out on Daniel Boone, Topahocken and Holy Line. Tomorrow, we'll be doing some milling for some paving over in Mount Park and Pennside area. We're pretty much finished with everything over the story walk uh, trail, but uh, other than that, that's pretty much what we've been doing.
Okay, thank you. Engineering, Joe?
Just two, uh, two quick items. We did have a pre-construction meeting for the proposed District Justice Building last Tuesday. Let's go, we'll be the uh, general contractor. Uh, they plan on starting sometime in June. The construction duration is approximately six months. Um, so that will take place um, shortly. Second item, we're also having a pre-construction meeting with Mount Penn Borough Water Authority tomorrow on Harvey Avenue, since the street will be uh, redone by the township. Uh, we're coordinating with Barwas Construction, who is the contractor that will be performing the water line work on behalf of Mount Penn Borough Water Authority. So uh, that work will start and then the detour will be implemented. Once that work starts for a cost several weeks, I could pass that information on to the township staff. So that can be uploaded on the website. Um, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief?
Evening, everyone. Um, the police department investigated uh, probably about nineteen thefts from uh, unlocked vehicles in the uh, Reifton area between Thirty-Fifth and Thirty-Eighth Streets. Um, we're asking township residents uh, who have any sort of surveillance systems um, to just, if they could take a look at them. Um, it would have occurred in the overnight hours on May seventeenth into May eighteenth. Uh, so uh, please, if you just go through your surveillance equipment and if you happen to notice anything, give the police department a, a call. Uh, but also along those same lines, uh, it's also serves as a reminder to residents to make sure that they are locking uh, their vehicles during the overnight hours. And please don't leave uh, any valuables inside your vehicle. Um, i- if you could, of course, it'd be greatly appreciated. Um, in addition, uh, the fortieth annual extra township Memorial Day Parade um, will be held this Monday from uh, nine, uh, starting at the high school. Um, we didn't do it last year uh, because of uh, of course, the, the pandemic. Um, the police department will be and the, will be participating uh, in the parade as well as the uh, fire police. Uh, that's all I have.
Thank you. Solicitors report? Chris, do you have anything?
Nothing to uh, add tonight. Thank you.
Uh, Jeff, tempted manager?
Um, two, two things. Um, the, the Board of Supervisors um, weighed in on the matter of the University Rifle Club um, special exception um, uh, application. Uh, I just want to report that the uh, zoning hearing board had a hearing on May thirteenth. At that hearing, the University Rifle Club withdrew their application for the special exception. Um, so uh, even though testimony was taken um, at the previous meeting, uh, along with some suggestions uh, by the board for special exception um, criteria, the, 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 the club itself chose at this time to withdraw their application. So they will not be looking to um, to advance any of the, the requirements of that special exception. I just wanted to make sure that the board knew that that one um, has been uh, officially closed out. The uh, the other item I, I wanted to just make a brief statement um, regarding going back to public meetings. Um, it's been well over a year since the township has held face-to-face meetings, um, board meetings, zoning meetings, planning commission. Um, and as a follow-up to that, I like to, to remind everyone that simply because we're going back to a face-to-face meeting um, does not mean um, that there's no rules. Um, the, the Board of Supervisors has a, a, a number of rules in place um, to, to help govern their meetings. Um, you need to remember that the purpose of the Board of Supervised Meeting is to conduct the business of the township. You need to approve your minutes, pay your bills, um, approve legislation, uh, develop the budget and provide for the well-being of the community. Residents will still be given the opportunity to make public comments on agenda items um, at the beginning of the meeting as they can now. And they'll also be given the opportunity to make comments at the end of the meeting on non-agenda items, just something that they would like to, to say um, regarding the township. Um, each resident, the way it's uh, stated right now, is given the three-minute time limit um, to make their comments. This is not meant to be a back-and-forth discussion between the speakers um, that are coming up to make their thing and other members of the audience. It's not meant to be a time for debate. Um, it's a public comment. Um, these, these are co- public comments. It's not question and answer. However, if a basic question, something minor is asked as part of someone's comment, um, it, it's up to the board uh, to, to determine if they want to answer that question at the time. If somebody is making a comment about something and they said, oh, oh, and by the way, what time does the parade start? If the board wants to say, oh, it starts at nine o'clock, I think that's perfectly appropriate. Um, however, very detailed questions um, that, that may involve a lot of research or a lot of numbers. Um, asking them on the fly is really not the most appropriate thing um, for, for a meeting. Um, you're, you're most likely not going to get the best answer. You might not get an answer at all. Um, things of that nature would be best um, provided to the, to the board members or to a staff member in advance so we can um, get that information to you. Um, so, so you, you get the, 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 the most accurate information and we're not um, wasting a lot of time going back and forth debating something. Um, you know, there will be times when the board will have a like public forum, um, where it will be a, a presentation and will allow for questions back and forth and debate over something. Um, but our normal board meetings, that is really not the, the location or the, or the function of that. So um, you also, residents should remember that you do have the, the ability to get documents from the township under the right-to-know laws in the state of Pennsylvania. Um, you know, we can provide information to you. Some of it may be uh, modified in that it's redacted to remove specific um, language such, or personal information such as someone's personal phone number, things of that nature. Um, but you know, that might be the, the recourse that many residents would want to take. Um, you know, we're, we're not obligated to create a document. Um, but you know, if you ask a question that we can give you an answer without uh, creating multiple spreadsheets and charts, um, hopefully we'll be able to, to provide the information that the residents are looking for. Um, we will be posting this information out on our website as a reminder to, to let people know about um, public decorum at a, at a public meeting. Um, you know, it's, it's been a long time since people have been uh, face-to-face in these meetings. And we just want to make sure that when we start having these meetings again, that everybody is respectful of each other and that um, that we get our business conducted um, in, in a timely fashion. Um, I know the board has, has done very well the past year in terms of getting their business done and completed and moving things along. And uh, we'd like to see that continue um, when we go back face-to-face. That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, public comments?
We had three submitted. They're all voicemails. The first one is from Tom Howell.
This is Tom Howell. Office, Office Box Forty-Six Thirty-Five. This is for the supervisor's meeting this evening. It is a non-agenda item. The uh, Thursday's meeting for the Daniel Boone Project, that is the uh, second meeting. I tried to find something on the website that gave me information on the first meeting. The taxpayers have paid so far twenty-three thousand eight hundred and ninety-six dollars and eleven cents. I believe that we have the right to have the information so that we can see exactly what our money is being paid for. Please correct the situation. At the last meeting, Michelle Kercher brought up the fact that nothing has really been done about the location for the meeting for the township meetings. What wasn't stated either was the uh, what's going on with the restaurant. The restaurants here in Exeter Township are open. Not exactly a hundred percent yet, but they would be going to a hundred percent. So the restaurant at the Renting Country Club that's owned by the taxpayers is not making any money for the taxpayers. I don't know any date that the supervisors have stated that. Yet Greg Gertieri and Joe Staub and David Spees, they have continued to play golf and benefited from the taxpayers paying for that debt. May thirty-first is Memorial Day and it's my opinion that the people in this country don't understand what they've gotten for the fact that another American has died so that we can have these benefits. Thank you. Uh, six, Thank you. Bye.
And Greg, if I may, I can address the Daniel Boone part of that, just so that anyone who's watching knows where to find that information.
Go ahead.
Just real quick. So the invitation for the public meeting that's coming up this week is right on the front page on the calendar. And if you just click on the link here, it'll take you to where you can get the link for the virtual meeting. And then the information from the meetings that have already happened are under, are on our current projects page on the website. So there's a whole page dedicated to the Daniel Boone Homestead master plan with the project goals and information on it. And there is actually a video from the recording of the first public meeting as well as the PowerPoint presentation that was made. So I just wanted to point that out for those who might be uh, watching the meeting and are interested in the process.
Okay, thank you. You want to move on to the next comment?
Yep, the next comment is from Ed Gallagher.
Yes, hello. My name is Ed Gallagher and I live at Seventy-One Devon Drive. Hello and good evening to both the board and my fellow residents of Exeter Township. I wanted to inquire about the legal bills the township receives. My interest is in them all and, but in, and seeking a breakdown. If I need to submit a right-to-know request, please let me know that. Specifically, I would like to know about the legal bill or invoice regarding the hearing that removed David Hughes from the primary ballot. I know that our solicitor represented Dave Spees and Greg Galpier, so there must have been some invoice. I know that Mr. Galpier submitted a right-to-know request for this, but I believe he may have submitted that before the document was received by the township. How much was that? Did the township pay that? Or was it paid by any individual, Mr. Spees, Mr. Galpier, or anyone else for that matter? There has been a lot of banter about this the past week or so, and I think it deserves an explanation so our residents can rest easy. Thank you again. Have a great meeting.
Um, I'll be addressing that in my report.
Contact number is four-eight-four-six-six-three-eight.
I'll be addressing that in my report.
Okay. Okay, and the third one is from David Hughes.
This is David Hughes. Uh, I live on Forty-seventh Street and this comment is related to non-agenda items. And the first thing I'd like to ask about, I have two issues. One is related to the one-point-seven-million-dollar sewer receivables. And it, it was stated in a meeting that all the money from that is going into the budget, not any sewer process, not, not any proceeds from the sale of the sewer plant, but only accounts receivable that you're collecting. And you're showing that the budget is going to be subsidized by this one-point-seven-million dollars. But to date, you've only collected one-hundred-thousand dollars. And in my experience, it's very unlikely that you're going to collect all that money this year. Is that your intention? Is that what you're telling us? You're going to collect all one-point-seven million so that you're not going to touch sewer proceeds? That doesn't seem doable to me. Is that, is that, could you expand on that? Uh, and tell us what you think is really going to be uh, coming out of that? And also, I think it's, the community would like to know how this grew so large. Were we not following up? There's some of these things, these receivables are years old. And were we not pursuing this in the past? What caused us to have such a large outstanding accounts receivable balance? And this should be talked about at least at once every monthly meeting or even every meeting to see what the uh, the results are, how we're collecting this, how it's going. This is taxpayer money that's owed to us. And you should be reporting on it until it's resolved. The other issue I want to talk about is the audit. I'd like to hear your comments. I did a video, I sent it to Joe Staub, which clearly explains how you guys have misinterpreted and presented to the community that the DCED report is a statutory audit. It is anything but a statutory audit. The last page clearly states in, 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 in AICPA terminology that it is not an audit. The real audit is still being conducted. And we'd like to know the update on that. When will that be available? And will you allow the township residents to review it and ask our auditor questions the next time we have a meeting? So there's a lot of issues here. I'd like to hear from Mr. Staub his take on this because he's pretty much taken the si- the position of a financial expert of out of the five supervisors. And our financial expert, the finance director, on how they can uh, project DCED report as a statutory audit.
Edit?
That's it.
Any, any comments? Okay, we'll move on to supervisor reports. Um, I'm going to begin, since there was a public comment, um, I'm going to be rea- I'm going to read this statement regarding misinformation. "The purpose of this statement is to address the misinformation that was posted on Facebook and Nextdoor by the Exeter Examiner containing the attorney's fees for the removal of David Hughes from the primary ballot in March. In this post, it is stated that a private donor paid the attorney fees. The post goes on to suggest that this is bribery, that the supervisor sold themselves for an amount of a couple thousand dollars and later asked that the supervisors sold themselves for an amount of a couple thousand dollars, and later asked, are they that easy to buy?" "Once again, the information being reported is not correct. Dave Spees paid the legal bill. Is that simple? He alone received the invoice, and he alone paid the invoice." "This is not the first time the Exeter Examiner has gotten this wrong. Earlier, the examiner claimed that the township had paid the bill, which was not true. Two false allegations for one situation. What is most troubling is that it seems this person is posing as a journalist without any credentials or training. A true, a true journalist would have done the following: fact-checked information before making this allegation, tried to get a second source to confirm what he had been told, contacted Dave Spees to ask how the payment was made, recognized that his source was not in a position to have inside knowledge concerning the payment. I know who the source is. The source did come to me and explain what happened. There's no reason to believe that he would have had this inside knowledge." "Concerning his first allegation, completed a right-to-know request for a copy of the invoice to find out if the township paid the legal fees. It is unfortunate that misinformation is such a big part of social media. This is certainly not the first incident, nor will it be the last. Another recent example is the misinformation that was posted concerning the DCED financial audit report, which was due on April first. Again, not true. The DCD report received the report on time, and it was approved. I would ask you to think about the motivation for these posts. It has also been reported that District Attorney is pursuing, pursuing criminal charges regarding a complaint filed in two thousand and nineteen alleging that the supervisors were using funds illegally from the sewer account. No criminal charges have been filed against any of the supervisors. Please keep in mind that this complaint is close to two years old. It is important to note that none of the supervisors have been found in violation of the Pennsylvania Ethics Act. I encourage you to look at their website. It lists all violations of the Ethics Act. When you do, you will see that none of the supervisors have bound, have been found in violation of it. It is a shame that we have to take time to address this misinformation, but if it's not addressed, many will believe it is true. Please keep in mind that we cannot address every piece of misinformation that is on social media. If you have questions or concerns, I would encourage you to contact the Township Administration or a Township Supervisor to get the correct information. Finally, I would like to also comment on the constant statements about the incompetence of our staff. It has been my experience that the Highway Department, the Police Department, and the administrative staff are all hardworking and very capable in their positions. They deserve our praise, not condemnation. I would like to say thank you to all those individuals for their hard work. Exeter is lucky to have you. Thank you. We'll move on to other supervisor comments. Michelle?
Yes, Jeff, when you're doing, sending out the bids for, it doesn't matter what, whatever, I'd like to see a sheet made up that lists the people that bid on it, what they bid. And so we know what's going on as the supervisors. I want to see who's coming in for business and, you know, who's getting it.
Okay, we currently, anyone that, that asks for a bid packet, we, we register them and log them in. That way, if there's any addendums that go out, we make sure that they get the addendum. So I'll be able to provide that to the board, who actually picked up a bid, who put, who submitted a bid, and then obviously the final bid results, certainly.
Okay, and I also would like to see a little more communication overall between the actual happenings of the township. You know, I don't, we always used to get things in the past, not talking about the past, that kept us up to date on everything. And many times I come in here and hear someone talking about something I never heard of. So I just want to keep, want everyone to remember that we need to have that information also because we get a lot of questions from cus, from residents.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Pyo?
Well, after all that, what I, the only thing I have is I'm looking forward to, Jeff is looking into Township Supervisor Boot Camp, I asked about, and I am looking forward to attending once we can locate one somewhere in Pennsylvania. And I didn't realize there was a Township Supervisor Boot Camp until I talked with Jeff. And hopefully I'll be able to attend that in the near future.
I could quick answer you. There are a whole number of them, but the first class, they're, they're set up over a three-day period a month apart. And typically, the first class doesn't start either until November or December after the elections. And then they're spaced out, you know, like a, a December meeting and a January meeting. And they are doing a virtual one where they're actually going to record one of those sessions, and you'll be able to interact with it. So you know, we'll be able to, you know, get you signed up for one, and this is through PSATs.
Mr. Staub?
Yeah, a couple of things. One, is the chief still here? Is the chief still here?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, just a question, and it's been a couple of residents. They had talked about some noise issues up in the thirty-six-hundred block of Perkyum. And could you address that, chief, or maybe next time if you don't have information now?
Which, which, which establishment do?
It was, I believe it's the winery.
Rose Lawn Bistro.
Yes, so I, I know we've been, we've received a few of those complaints. The, the business in question, you know, has a, a sound decibel meter, which we use. I know they monitor themselves there. When we receive complaints, we, we respond. We take our, our own decibel meter to ensure that they're in compliance with the, with the Township ordinance. To date, we found that they have been in compliance with the ordinance and in, in regards to the, the decibel reading that our officers have, have observed. And so, and also in regards to the time restraints that they're in place, they do meet the time restraints. So we're continuing to work with them. I know if, if Will's still here, you know, we, we've been trying to, uh, work with them and advise them that we have been receiving complaints and the need for them to keep the noise down. I know the property owner in question, I believe, is, is intended to us that next year they will be moving to a different location. So hopefully it should only, it should only be something that affects this summer.
Okay, thank you. Couple other things. As far as the RCC Restaurant actually had it on my, a note here. Thank you, Mr. Howell. I'd like for us to consider putting it as a discussion point for next week as far as an RFP. Obviously, restaurants weren't looking to open because of COVID. They were all being shut down, but now that we are up to a hundred percent, I think it's time to re, revisit that. And then the last thing, social media, there was a couple of other things. One, just that entire bribery situation. I know how that personally affected me. I had to self-report that to my company because it is on social media. We monitor social media on a daily basis. And because there were actually, it was intimated that there was bribery involved, that I had to self-report that to the compliance director and the president of our company. So fortunately, they realized that there wasn't much to it, especially for me. But needless to say, it was somewhat embarrassing. So I would hope that people were, one, careful how they comment and when they without, without the facts when it comes to that. And any other thing, too, the Exeter Reading Country Club Partnership had come up about their influence with the township. Again, transparent, I was, I was involved. I was the president of the partnership when I decided to run. I, I, or I believe when I won, I, I don't remember the exact date, but I, I did resign. I have nothing to do with the Reading Country Club Partnership, other than write checks. It is a charitable organization that was set up for, to help preserve the club when they thought that, when a lot of people, I believe it was three hundred or so, thought that the club was going to be sold for a lot less than what we owed on it. And they wanted to preserve, preserve the property for the township. And other than that, what we do and what the people do is they raise money for charity. If that's a problem, and if that's running the township, then I'm proud to be part of it. But when I hear that type of stuff, and, and look, I get it as a township supervisor, you're going to get beat up or whatever board you sit on. But come on. I mean, literally, I just wrote a check and dropped it off today for a hundred bucks for the library. That was for the ERCC pay. So if that's bad, then I'm going to continue doing bad. That's it for me.
Thank you. Mr. Spees?
Thanks, Joe. Yeah, thanks, Greg, for your, your statement on the social media stuff. Just following up on that. Yes, I didn't, the process you were talking about, the, the ballot petition. I initiated that process, as you said, when it came to the board. That was being transparent, in my opinion, to use, have use of the township solicitor, so it wasn't seen as anything improper. Typically, if we're going to approve legal action, we set a limit or set a dollar spending if it's going to spend a dime of taxpayer money. And that was not the case. So I initiated the process. I ended the process. I received the only invoice that I'm sure that a law firm had issued, and I paid that invoice. So yeah, you, no one, no one else has a copy of that. So you can file a right-to-know request, but you won't see it unless you file one with me. Other than that, the other comment that Greg made on the staff, yeah, I want to thank a lot of interaction that we have at both as residents and even more as supervisors with our fire department, police department, even the EMS and the highway and the administration. As a resident and supervisor, I appreciate certainly their hard work and their dedication to their, to their roles in this township. And finally, my last comment is just condolences to the family of Bonnie and Terry Hafer. They passed away. Bonnie was serving on the planning commission. They were involved in a fatal accident over the weekend. So condolences to their, their family. That's all I have for now.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make that motion.
Someone want a second? All right, comments, questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post five-oh vote. Good night, everyone.
Night.
Night.
Night.